Mr. Chairman, we're left.
Welcome back, everybody. We're in the afternoon session of a BOE board preparing. We have our next appeal is JM 2335, correct? Yep. So I guess Jennifer, you're running this show.
You need to swear Anthony in.
Oh, yeah. And did I swear you in?
Yes.
Anthony, you raise your right hand? Let me know when you raise it. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God. Thank you, sir. Jennifer, I'll turn over to you.
All righty. So Anthony's with us today to provide any answers to any questions related to the analysis of condominium units. This is appeal number JM 2335. Property owner is Herman and Susan McMillan. Parcel number is RPM 033800B0010. And this is at 917 Fairway Drive, Unit 1B in McCall. This is Unit 1B of the Fairway Condominiums. The property consists of 1,484 square feet. It's graded as a good. And it also has a 240-square-foot garage. The appellant offered no comparable sales.
Are we wrapping up?
It's been a long must.
She's really dirty.
She's messy, really. All right, you two, settle down. Adverb kids eat date.
It was worth it. Okay. We've recovered.
All right. So this is McMillan provided no comps. Her biggest concern was other, how we have other condominiums valued. She's looking at assessed values. Okay, why is this, this? Why do we have? She felt hers was valued higher than neighbors. In her statement, she did say I had, I stated that there were no comparables for her to review. I would like to clarify, there were no sales in 2022 for the Fairway Condominiums. However, we do have a sale that occurred 11/5 of '21, so the tail end of '21. And that one had a time-adjusted sale of $865,200. That comparable is also a condominium in the Fairway condos. Same grade, same neighborhood, similar square footage. It's actually an older unit. It was built in 1982, where the subject property was built in '92. Our second comp sold in '23, Fairway Condominiums. Time-adjusted sale of $650,000. So her, the subject property is coming in at $472.83 a square foot. The average between those two sales comes in at $491.15. I feel like Anthony, you did a good job in getting these specific condominiums valued correctly because we're right in between the two.
Why such a discrepancy in the same area? That's really interesting. Because it did go way down in '23 versus '21. And '22 was our largest increase. So you would have thought, you know, that in the '23 sale, that it would have jumped even higher.
I did some searching online to see, you know, if there were pictures available online, if one had been remodeled and the other not. But unfortunately, I came up short on being able to find any further information on those.
Your effective dates are still both '92 on that second sale.
So the, there are two different buildings that were built different years. So in the same complex, one building was built in '92. And the other were built in '82.
But you have both effective dates of '92. The, the subject property is '92. And the one that I'm comparing it closely to is the second comp. At 428 a square foot versus 472 a square foot. Is there only three feet off?
You're talking about the one in Shiner?
Five square feet, five square feet difference.
Fairway condos, they're all the Fairway condos.
Second, second one down.
$650,000 adjusted sale in, you know, I mean, it was only April of this year, so. To me, that one's, you know, we need, we need a little more on what that second comp is. Is there all good? I mean, you're literally, yeah, five square feet off. I get we're blending the two, but for some reason, the sale in '21 was much higher. Whether that one had been remodeled.
Is that I wasn't able to verify?
So show me where we bring up RPM 033800A0030.
Brundage Meadows?
No, it's the one right above it.
That's the.
So it's in the same building. So literally, their amenities are exactly the same.
627 square feet. A lot of difference in price.
Their effective years are exactly the same, so. So why are we 70,000 more? That is a little bit of a concern to me.
I think because that second sale is a sale that occurred in '23, that's capturing the market.
Decreasing market?
The, yes. Which will be reflected in next year's assessment.
Next year's assessment, okay. That makes sense.
Listen, Anthony, when we look at the overall trend for condos in this 542055 neighborhood, all of the condos, not just a couple of sales or one sale in that one. We, our trend was trending upwards quite a bit. We're still at 85, 86% ratio on condos in that neighborhood. And our median price per square foot is 518. I really don't think we're too far off on this one. That one sale does stand out as a little, as saying we're a little high. If you look at the older sales, yeah, we're, we're in there. And then if you look at all the sales in that neighborhood, similar condos with similar style amenities and whatnot, we're, we're pretty good. We're at 86% ratio and a 518 price per square foot on mediums.
And what's their price per square foot?
472.
So they're below the median?
Do we feel like we're right in there?
Well, the median is 518 and the subject property is 472.
470, 472.
Yeah.
But Anthony, the, so this is what's throwing me a bit though, because the rest of the comps. So Brundage Meadows are only 627 square feet, which is going to throw off your price per square foot. Ashbrook condos are only 703 square feet. So that automatically goes to a higher price per square foot just because of the size of the unit. Yeah. And so it's going to skew your average price per square foot up. I don't know.
You're right. The smaller the unit, the higher the price per square foot. Most part, I think, do a little something here.
The Rivers Bend?
Oh, really? There's only three.
If I take the five large condos in that neighborhood, and I get a, get a median price of 464 a square foot. So I've got 1107, 1323, 1520, 1739, and 2040 are my square foot on those five large condos in this neighborhood, I can, 460, 496 price per square.
469, 96. And we've got them at 472, 83. So that's still not that much per square foot. That's only $3 a square foot difference. Maybe it is, maybe it's just a trend, and next year, we're going to see it in all of those in there. But they're really only, the good comp is probably Rivers Bend on our comps. 410 a square foot. At one sale in '21, that's probably when the market was really zinging along and anybody could sell it for whatever they wanted, honestly. That one's really skewing it up a lot more than the rest of them are.
And again, we're looking at, you know, we have so few sales. We're having to look at just the overall trend in, in the neighborhood of similar condos. You know, they're, what, they went up trend-wise. And it's been really tough with that, again, lack of sales in the area and then the non-reported sales. We had more non-reported sales for '22 than we had in '21. So we're, we're mostly using trending on this, not really breaking it into the price per square foot.
Jennifer, you said this value is at 85% of median, right? 85% of the, what's one, what am I trying to ask?
He said we were at 86, 86% of full market value.
Of full market value. Because that's kind of what she's, on her attachment too, is what she's talking about. It's a square foot charge. But I don't think it should be 354 either.
His average is 518.
That's the median.
That's the median. We're down at 472.
The average here in your comp is 569. That's even higher than what this was.
469 is just averaging all of them.
So she's got an excellent grade, two average grades, and one good grade. And this one is a good grade.
And on, you know, located on the golf course as well, the.
The location is.
Location. Her comparisons are in a different neighborhood for condos. So 542055 is our Lakeview and Golf Course. More of a top-tier neighborhood.
Did you use comps that were not in the 542055 neighborhood?
Yes.
So an inferior neighborhood?
Yes.
What do you think here? Do you want to make a motion? I think 472 is right in there. Hey. I'm seeing. Go ahead and make a motion if you're ready. Make a motion. We deny the appeal for, what are we at? 2335? Yep. I'll second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye. I guess it might be a little question.
If it is, it's a little high, but not by a dollar or two a square foot.
In Idaho code, we have to be within 10% of full market value.
Okay, so the last one on the list.
So that's going to be an in-person. At 1:30.
Okay, so Doug will mute and we'll come back at 1:30.
See you guys on a couple of weeks.
Thanks.
Get us back on Doug. Hey, welcome back. We're in our last appeal for the year. This is JW2339 and Natasha, before we start, I need you to raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so I'll be gone.
I do.
Thank you very much. The way this kind of works is you get to start off and soon as you get the information, then we'll go from there. Okay.
Natasha, for the record, can I get your last name?
Yes, Hawkesworth, like the bird, H-A-W-K-S. I do a R-T-H. I've owned 906 Canvas Place for about six years and I've kind of watched the valuations go up and down and of course, what, 2020 was kind of a crazy year with COVID and 2021, the value of the property went up drastically along with every other property in the country. And even with last year's valuation being gone, have gone up, you know, 44%, it still was slight, it was justifiable, I could argue that, right? With it going up another just under 20% and the market kind of staying the same and having pulled comps from last year of similar properties, it was really hard to get to that valuation of just under 890. All the comps from, even if I pulled comps from January through December, all of them that were similar to my cabin were in the sevens range. Of course, there were outliers, but there was maybe one in the sixes and there was one in the eights. I know we have like, we have a limited amount of comps just because of people don't want to sell. But the ones that were there, I pulled from the last six months and it really didn't come close to what the valuation was and so I wanted to kind of raise my hand.
That's great, that's great. And who's representing this from you are?
Me. Okay, so the subject property is located in Spring Mountain Ranch. The parcel is 1,692 square feet, home built in 1997. It's graded as a good. Below are the values for the last three years. The appellant offered four comparables, all are average graded homes in different neighborhoods. So I wrote those out on the spreadsheet on the back page. And so, yeah, hers are all average dwelling grades. The first two, I believe, are in the Woodlands and the last two are in Saronga Estates. So I took three of the sales in her same neighborhood. The first one, you know, is a good plus where hers is a good. It's about 1,000 more square feet, about four years newer. Sold for 1.2, time turned that out, you know, 1.3. What was the address for that? Ah, yeah, I don't have them right now. I think I was the buyer rep on that. Yeah. I took the lowest, which is similar. It's an average land grade, so a full grade lower, a little bit less square footage. Same year, sold at 675, time turned out to 775. We're coming in about 347 square foot, hers is 373. The average in the area is 415. So she's a little bit lower than the average on our sales. In the area.
Well, it looks like, um, yeah, the average per square foot value is quite a bit lower. You understand what we're doing, Natasha?
Yeah, no, I do, yeah.
I think, I don't know, I feel like we're in a pretty good spot.
If you're going solely off of per square footage, I don't know if that's entirely fair, only because, you know, the sum of the properties are newer. I mean, larger, smaller, in terms of, you know, 2001 built, 19...
86.
86, 87, okay, those are along the same lines, but, um...
Where is the... So we don't go off just square footage, just so you know.
Okay, that's, and, and that's what I'm, that's where my point is.
We go, we, of course, you know, quality of construction.
Right. I mean, two of those are significantly larger than mine, almost 1,000 square feet larger. Of course, it's going to be a lot more, you know?
I think the reason she included those is because yours is a good grade. So it's like one, it's a step above just your bare bones construction. We have you as a good grade on your home. I think she included all those to show that you're kind of in the middle. So she's got a very good, a good plus and an average and you kind of fit right in between per square foot to just kind of paint that picture. I'm going to guess that she didn't have any good grade homes sell in Spring Mountain Ranch. Another thing too is we only value Spring Mountain Ranch, it's in its own neighborhood.
Right.
All of Spring Mountain.
So in order to pull comps, I should have just pulled them from Spring Mountain?
Well, because I tried to pull comps from just the last few months so that it was more... No, I get it.
Relative, because all of the closing dates were in the last three months in opposed to like something that was in April, which really, the market crashed, not crashed, significantly changed in March when the inflation changed and then the rates dropped. So like the prices from January to the beginning of April are completely different from April through the end of the year, even to now, because it's kind of stayed very consistent.
What we saw with sales in Valley County was sale prices that continued to climb through July is what was being reported to us. And then at the end of July, they flattened, which we all kind of expected them to come down.
We're all holding our breath.
We were, and, but they just kind of just did this. Interest rate hike, of course, slowed the market way down. But we didn't see a decrease in sale prices and we kept expecting to see it and we didn't.
It stabilized.
It did.
It definitely did.
It stabilized.
But it, it was different then from the beginning of the year.
The end of the year versus the beginning? Oh, absolutely.
And so that's where I was trying to capture it because I had, I had pulled all my comps on my computer, which I can pull out, but just in the sense of same size, same years, same condition. If I needed to stay within Spring Mountain Ranch, that would have been good to know.
We have all the Spring Mountain Ranch subdivisions in their own geographic neighborhood, if you will. And so, because we have learned over the last several years that that geographic area kind of sells a little different than the rest of McCall and it really isn't fair, we try to be as fair as possible. And so when we see that Spring Mountain Ranch is selling a little differently than the rest of McCall, they went ahead and created their own neighborhood. We created a neighborhood just for all the Spring Mountain Ranch.
And to capture that.
To capture that.
They just have so many different amenities than the rest of McCall. So when you're looking at some of these, you know, Spring Mountain is just offers so many.
It's a different, okay.
It just, the amenities. And so what I'm hearing you say, because I was an agent too. So each year is looked at differently. So 22 is, you know, going to be looked at differently, that's what we're looking at right now. 23 sales will be reflected in next year's information. So, yeah, and so 22 was still a very vibrant year, even though it did flatten at the end of the year. And until we get some more supply, demand's still there, as we both know.
Yeah.
And we'll see what happens this year.
I just find it hard to justify, you know, going up 44% from 21 to 22, or sorry, 21's a valuation to 22 and then going up another 20% when those two years, you know, they were different and the demand has stabilized, but that's also a drastic increase. I mean, going from 517 to 744 to 887. I don't think I could sell my house, that cabin for 887, and that was last year.
And we've seen everybody's, we've done, I don't know how many of these. We're all tired of doing these.
Oh, I'm sure. I did my whole street, by the way. So like I know the valuations of every person on my street and I made a copy for you guys if you'd like. And it tells you the rate increase, the only, the only decrease were the land parcels and they went down 8.42%. Everyone else went up from 10 all the way to 26%.
And that's what we've seen here at the table, doing all these, is that they've been averaging a good 20 to 30% increase, which to me is, seems like a lot, but that's been kind of the average across everybody's.
Um, if you want to.
And when we do this, the Board of Equalization makes sure everybody is equal in what's happening across the board. And so, and the way that the state looks at this, we've, we have to be within 10%, either high or low of what the state value is. If they feel like we're off, they will come in and revalue it and then we don't get the opportunity to be lower than 100% of the value. So we try to remain within that 10%. We can be off by 10%, you know, over or under. And so that's something that we look at, we just make sure everybody is valued the same. Land sales this last year have started, you know, leveling off because more lots came on the market. So we have seen a little bit of a decrease. But building prices, building costs, my husband, or my husband and son are home builders. And so the cost of construction, it has not changed, it has not gone down. As a matter of fact, there's still building and it's starting back up again unfortunately, so.
I even saw from last year, excuse me, new houses that were larger, obviously newer, that was, that had sold for less than this. So that doesn't make sense to me then either.
In Spring Mountain?
It's not within Spring Mountain, but it is within McCall and not an outlier of McCall, within the city center.
Got to go on sales though, and it's got to go.
That was a sale.
But what I'm saying is got to go on sales and it's got to go within Spring Mountain. That's, you're comparing apples to apples then because of all the amenities that are over there. But I don't know where, where the building was, I, I know what the price per square foot is and holding strong at that.
So a question for you, are these ones in the yellow, are these in the same white cloud area?
No, I kind of just parceled them up by like assessed value price, you know, because how much they like increased. That was just for my own internal.
Also, one thing that I've learned throughout the three years I've been doing this is the assessors don't hit every area every year. They have to be within an area within five years. McCall had not been done for five years, so last year you saw a large increase because it had not been boots on the ground in five years, from what my understanding was. And so when they went and they actually did that work, McCall increased a little bit more than some of the other areas. I don't know where we are this year, so where are you guys at this year? Lake Fork?
Actually, um... Lake Fork and actually Cascade.
Yeah.
Downed a lot. Usually, you know, you've got the trickle down effect as you go south, the values, you know, the sale prices aren't as high. But I'll tell you what, Cascade got hit hard.
Well, and Cascade's going up a lot this year, I feel like, just because of the demand in my circle.
In the sale prices, yes.
I do residential as well, but in like commercial, I've been hit up hard for Cascade.
Yeah, and then the State Tax Commission just wanted information. Is the State Tax Commission suggested that we use 1% per month for our time adjustment on the sales for... So, you know, because a lot of people don't, they don't realize like when your, your market isn't stable and it's, you know, either going way up or it's going way down, we have to time adjust the sale prices so that no matter what time of the year the sale occurs, it's fair. Be able to analyze that, you know, to be fair, I can help everybody. And so this year it was suggested that we use 1%, so we did.
I did too, yeah.
Anyway, just so you have that information and realize that too. A lot of people don't understand, and it doesn't...
So the way that I understand it is I should have pulled comps from Spring Mountain Ranch. Lesson learned.
Yes, and you can, and if you ever in the future call in, in, well, now you'll know the Spring Mountain Ranch, but any other area, if you're ever in question, just give us a...
Where's that recent property at?
First one?
Right there? On Canvas, yeah.
My daughter calls it the Cabin's House. Because when, we bought it when she was two and she goes, can we go to Cabin's House?
Christine, can you, can you answer why the land values went down?
I'm not sure on that, I don't.
That's what I can't get straight in my mind, it's why that?
Why the land values went down?
The land value did go down in some areas throughout the county, not in all areas. But Anthony will analyze, of course, all the land sales first to determine the land value. So then when he has the land values set and figure out, he can extrapolate the improvement.
So was there any bare lot sales in there?
That was one I want to say.
That's the only thing that I'm tripping on is that land value.
Not sure on bare lots, because I haven't had anybody.
About 20, 21,000.
I think there was just more lots on the market.
Yeah.
I mean, we had some subdivisions.
Looks like there's some bare lots still around.
There still are.
Well, I hate to say it, but, you know, from 21 to 22, you jumped 227,000. From 22 to 23, you only jumped 143,000. So your rent increases is slowing down. And it's better that it's going up than it is if it's going down. If everybody starts going down, it gets really tough for a lot of people because people get inverted on their mortgages and all kinds of nasty things happen.
The assess values go up, the levy rates generally will calm down. Also, I don't know if you've had time to read up on that house built 292?
Yeah.
Good.
But there's a lot of ifs in that.
True, and it is going to benefit people that are receiving a homeowner's exemption the most.
Sure, yeah.
But I do believe...
Got to be on a budget.
Yeah, but I do believe it's going to provide relief for...
Up to five years, three to five years.
Yeah.
Well, we've been through this in 05 and 06, when the interest rates went up, everything slowed down, you know, how that works. And what they do with interest rates now. You know, China's basically saying they're not going to pay over $3 trillion in bonds to the US today. So it's like, what happens if that doesn't get paid? That's really going to jack interest rates up. So I think it'll crash our economy, so I hope they get that figured out, but it's been really good for, since then, and low interest rates and taking off. And I think things are starting to hit the brakes a little bit, but I guess what I'm saying is your rate of increase wasn't as much this year as it was from the year before.
Right.
And I think we're pretty straight in the neighborhood with sales, so. I'm going to make a motion that we deny your appeal. I know you're not going to like that, but I think we're, we're here to equalize and that's what we're trying to do is make sure we're not overburdening anybody, one particular taxpayer, that's our job. And I think we're pretty fair.
The only thing I was going to say was, you know, swelling 44% increase last year was very challenging and going up another 20% from that 44%, I think that's just, that was...
44% from 21 to 22.
Correct, and then another 20% from 22 to 23.
And then when they do it this year from 22 to 23, I think that's probably going to be closer to 10.
But it's still adding on to the cost of what it costs to own a cabin and have that, that's been in, you know, in our family for six years already. It does put that extra burden on every single year.
Well, hopefully the, with like Sue said, the levy rates can be lowered, so your taxes should be about the same. Maybe a little bit higher, but not much.
And I also think the point is, is that if I were to sell my home, or sell the cabin, the Cabin's House, I, knowing the market, and I, I'm part of MLS up here, I'm part of the MLS down in Boise as well. I've had, you know, my brokerage company for 15 years. I do not think I could get 890 for this cabin, even last year in that market. I just don't think that valuation is fair.
Well, we hope you don't sell and leave, we want you to stay.
That's not my goal, I want, I, that's not my goal, it's just the increase each year, year. It might be going down, but it's still being increased and that's where I don't find this, to be fair.
And we understand, and we've heard this, you know, a lot. People are really struggling with what's happening in Valley County right now. The housing prices are just escalating. If you ever had to replace it, you'd never be able to replace it.
No, no way.
I'm not sure you could even build it for that, man.
Well, yeah, and I, I just...
You just got to make sure insurance is not replacement cost.
Yeah, I had a line, I was like, oh, if only I'm like...
Understood, and we're all struggling with it honestly, I mean, we just are. All of us, especially in the real estate market are going, God, you're never going to get that. And then boom, you get a, you know, three offers and you get it.
That's a cool swing.
So, and again, we are in 2022. I don't know what you'd be able to sell it for today, but I know that it was an escalating market last year, so. Now I'll second Els' motion.
Hey, we got a motion second to deny 2339, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
We're all going to take a deep breath and see what happens this year. You know, I'm, I'm sure that we're going to have either leveling where there isn't increases, like we're continuing to see. But I will tell you that my son, who's a home builder, has had absolutely no one drop out and has, this year's totally full and next year he's already got five builds. I mean, people are just continuing to come, it's not, we're not seeing the decrease in activity.
No, my husband's a civil engineer. He's doing a lot of...
Seeing it too.
Here too.
Yeah, yeah. And it is, it's, it really frightens us for our seniors, I mean, the senior citizens, this, they're being priced out of their homes. And it's like, the problem is, we, we can't manipulate it. This is something we do for the state of Idaho. Our Board of Equalization is set by the Assessor in the state of Idaho and that's why the legislature's trying so hard to try and find some property tax relief measures because people are getting priced out of their homes.
I mean, and this goes off the cuff right here, is, and this goes back to seniors because my parents are in that boat and this is kind of off the record, right? Yeah, they're getting priced out of their homes, they, they have owned a home forever and all they have to do is pay their property tax, they can't afford to do that. So having even just a cap on how much it can go up every year and just percentage wise would be helpful, knowing that I'm only going to be having to pay this much more, not 44% or 20% or another 150%.
That would be the best way if we could just kind of standard it always.
You know, like I know inflation will go up this much, so I'm going to have to pay another 3%. But at least you can plan for that.
Contact your legislators because they're the ones that have...
I try. Right here.
As we all do too, because this is near and dear to every one of our hearts.
Sure, you guys all have homes here.
Your, your parents signed up for CIRCA Breaker, they're a CIRCA breaker, that they may be eligible, that's an income-based program. We have lots of seniors on that. Does it now sue $32,000 or less?
On the new guidelines, they upped it this year.
34,000?
I don't know, we have a brochure downstairs, so if you want to follow, you can.
There's also ways, if, so they do have a program also, if they cannot afford to pay their taxes, it goes against the mortgage.
I do know that, yes, I'm aware of that, because I also do help seniors out a lot and get into their next home because they don't want to sell their two-story home because it's, they can't get into their next one.
Do your parents live in Idaho?
Yes.
Okay, so there are a couple of programs out there.
I'll have to look it up.
Yeah, and I'll get you a brochure and maybe you could share it with them and then they can determine if they think that they would be eligible and if so, all they have to do is apply to the Assessor's office.
Oh, perfect, okay.
Yeah, so I'll get you that information.
Thank you so much.
You bet.
Reverse mortgages, which helps seniors stay in their home.
For sure.
I mean, you know, there's...
That's at a higher interest rate now, isn't it?
It's not that bad though.
Their kids love that.
Was that the last one? Are we done?
It's not bad.
Okay, so then I'm going to adjourn this meeting and call it a day.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.